What we need and the least negative impact on the citizens. So bulky items that would be sitting in the public right of way, this is only those in the public right of way, would have a sticker placed on them stating that it needs to be removed within 48 hours. Or they would need to call for a bulky item collection to the sanitation office, or the utility count for the property will be charged and the item would be removed by the city. Okay? So they would get a sticker, if you had a sofa sitting out in the right of way, on your property, within the road right of way, you'd get a sticker put on it and then you'd have 48 hours to either call the sanitation office and say, hey, I'd like a bulky item pickup for that, or move it. And if you call, or if you move it, then there would be no fee associated with it other than the original bulky item fee, which right now is $10, okay? If you don't move it and then we have to come and pick it up, then it's going to be double the fee, okay? The sticker will also provide the address of the property in violation, the date and time the sticker was placed, and the sanitation office phone number so that they would know who to contact, and that would be 284-6070. The fee for removal will be double the current bulky item pickup fee if they don't remove it within the 48 hours from the stickered time. Now, if it was stickered on a Friday afternoon, we're not going to pick it up until Monday, and so they would have until Monday because we're not going to send a crew out, and it'll say something on there, and some of our program literature would say that on it, too. Stickers would be placed on the items in the public right of way, and a notice will be left on the door and on the trash container if it happens to be their collection day. If it's not their collection day, we're not going to look for their trash container to hang on it, but we would put something on the door if we can that tells them, hey, you've got something that's been stickered within the public right of way, please call in a bulky item pickup or remove it, or we're going to haul it off and then your account is going to be charged. The sanitation inspectors and our refuse collectors, along with our environmental officer, will be the ones leaving the stickers and the door notices for the program. If the customer calls in a bulky item pickup before a collection of the stickered item, then they would not be charged. I want to make that clear because we talked about it multiple ways, and this is how we'd like to handle it. The ordinance would become official upon publication, however, we would not implement the full program until July 1 because we want to get all of our literature ready and do all of our public education between the point of approval of the ordinance and publication and July 1. Right now, we're saying that we could institute this program with no additional operational costs to the sanitation budget. And if you are in favor of this, then we will clean up any left remaining items in the ordinance, and we would bring it back to you at the next meeting. But we wanted this to be kind of a first read and be able to talk about the issues of the program.
So when they leave the sticker, they also note that on their record and take it back so that they are able to track this?
Yeah, we have, we will have to keep really good records, and somebody's not going to be able to say, hey, you didn't put it there at this time, because the point when we put a sticker down, we're going to be logging that in, the date and the time, and that will also trigger when the collection for that location would occur as well. And it would be with the bulky item pickup. Now, and this is only for those bulky, for the items that are approved for the bulky item pickup. If it's a pile of leaves, we're not going to pick it up. If it's a mattress or a sofa, those big items that are a part of the bulky item program, the things that we can pick up with the bulky item program, that's what we would be stickering.
So if it's a pile of leaves, then what do they do? Do they leave some reminder about what they really need to be doing with that?
Anything that is not something that we can collect with the bulky item pickup program would remain a nuisance item, and it would run through the environmental control process. Also, the thing to keep in mind is this, if it is, say it's a rental property, if it's a single-family residential property and it's a rental house, and somebody has left a mattress out in the public right of way, but they didn't call in their bulky item pickup, whoever is paying the utility bill is who's going to get charged for the bulky item pickup, the double fee if they don't call it in or remove it.
So that was one of my questions about landlord getting the bill on that utility bill. My question is, do rental properties have to be registered with the city?
We do not have a rental register.
So we wouldn't have a natural way to say, okay, that's a rental property, let's contact this way versus?
Other than general familiarity if staff is available.
Right. All right.
And remember, it's in the public right of way, which is right of way that the city has jurisdiction over, in some, let's say, trailer parks. Some of the trailer parks, the roadways are private and not public. So if there's a mattress laying along the roadway in a trailer park, and somebody says, hey, how come you haven't put a bulky item 48-hour sticker on that bad boy? We're going to say, well, because it happens to be a street that's not in the public right of way, it's owned by the...
So this isn't designed to do anything other than to streamline when we have sofas or mattresses dying on the curb? And keeping those nuisances out of the court system and cleaning up Newton?
Right.
Exactly.
So what about the ones on the private drive area, then? Does that have to go?
There's still the traditional means in terms of going through city court violations. It just, it takes more time and we go through that process, right?
Goes through the nuisance process like anything else.
Which uses a lot of resources, time, and therefore costs money.
Right.
This makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, you've done a lot of work on it.
Help me on the time a little bit. So if at 3:00 on a Monday afternoon, I get a notice for a couch sitting by my curb, since we're using couch. Number one, I think that tagging a couch is going to be rather difficult. So they put a notice on my, most couches sitting by the curb are probably not in the best shape. So I don't know that you're going to be able to attach a sticker to a couch that's been sitting outside for a week, or hypothetically, at that point, it could have been six days because it wasn't there last Monday, right? So it gets put on there, 48 hours begins at the time it's put there. So when would it be eligible to be picked up, then?
Would it be eligible to be picked up if it was 3:00 on Monday? So you've got a 3:00 Tuesday, 3:00 Wednesday, it would be eligible to be picked up 3:00 Wednesday. But it's not going to be picked up at 3:00 on Wednesday because we run four 10-hour shifts so that we can adjust for holidays, so it's probably going to be picked up on Thursday in that scenario.
Okay.
Okay.
We're not going to run a special route for these to hit the 40, our goal isn't just to hit the 48-hour mark, it's to get close there.
And the tagging is identified during normal route processes, or is a separate person going to be doing it, like the recycling inspectors? Is this going to be an additional duty for them?
It will be an additional duty for them, but all of our drivers will have the ability to sticker something as well. And as, as you know, we've talked about recycling, and that may have changes coming depending on how tipping fees go and how the recycling program kind of morphs at the county level because we are delivering our recyclables to recycling facilities operated by the county. As that changes, we are going to be able to kind of adjust our operational staff to help with this program as needed.
Is our staff ready for the influx of calls of reporting of sofas and mattresses?
Yeah, I mean, it's like anything, you're going to have a big surge at the beginning, and we'll do our best to get to those.
I'm sure your staff can do it.
I don't have any problems with the program. The implementation seems like it's going to be rather difficult to tag an item that's been sitting outside and have that be effective.
We, well, we are in the middle of a sticker testing program because we want it to be industrial sticky, if you will.
Yeah.
And the door.
It'll be on the door. Yeah. I mean, what's the, what's the current process now if somebody has a item in their yard that is considered, what is it, part of the?
It'd be the same as if it was in private property where a letter would go out from the bar.
We would leave a notice on the door or a letter would be mailed?
Oh, no.
No, 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 no.
They just mail a letter.
Right.
Right.
Today, if there was a couch sitting out in the public right of way and trash truck goes by, typically, if they haven't seen it before, and especially if it was after a weekend and something was off about it, they would wait a week, or till the next time they're by there, and they would note it. And these guys know their routes really well.
Right.
And then they'll call it in and they'll say, hey, is there a bulky item pickup for this? I'm at so-and-so address. Or they'll write it down and they'll check with the folks in the office to see if we have a bulky item for that location for the day. And if we don't, then it gets turned in from our sanitation staff up here to the environmental control officer, and it goes on his list, and then he goes out and checks it, and then he will go through the process that Chris is talking about, sending a notice. And then there's the notification, and then the time that we have to wait to get it back because it goes registered mail and all of that.
Okay.
This will speed that part up. Good.
You may have to arm them with some zip ties or something to attach it to.
Big zip ties.
Go around a couch.
Go around the arm.
Something.
Baylin wire, we've got a lot of that.
Sticky pens.
Well, thank you for your hard work on that.
I just, I mean, it's going to be impossible to prove that that sticker stayed there, right? That's what we're going to hear from people. Oh, I got charged 20 bucks, but that sticker was never on it. I didn't know I was supposed to move it.
But you put something on the door, too.
We're going to put something on the door. We're going to do everything that we can do.
Yep.
Like I said, I like the program. I think it's, we're going to hear a lot of complaints about it.
Yes.
And that's part of our job, I think, is to avoid our citizens getting upset with stuff we're doing. I disagree with the program. We need to get all the couches and vacuum cleaners we can off the curb, washing machines and everything else, but.
I think the education, the education upfront of, you know, this is the bulky, get out in front of it will help.
And the thing to remember, this is again only in the public right of way. In most places, not all, but you've got a 60-foot right of way so that it's 11 and a half foot behind the curb whenever you have the 31-foot back-to-back street. So 11 and a half foot behind the curb, anything that's farther away than that is not something we're going to be stickering. And so that would go through the normal process. I think that will be something, I think we'll get calls about that, too. Hey, how come you didn't sticker this thing? Well, because it's not in the public right of way.
Okay, just let me make sure, too. What if I'm driving along and I see something and it hasn't been stickered? Or maybe it just came, or maybe I've noticed it a week or more, maybe the trash people haven't been there yet.
You can call the sanitation officer, you call the engineering officer, and then we'll get word to the folks that have the stickers.
Okay, so you want to go that route instead of going through the nuisance? I mean, that would certainly be...
Well, when you call the engineering officer, it gets given to the nuisance folks, but the folks that have the, so Jerry's going to have stickers and so is our sanitation staff.
Okay. All right. Hope to see that this will help a great deal.
So as written, everybody's okay if we just make tweaks to what we need to from a legal standpoint, and then we bring it back to you at your next meeting, the last meeting in April?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item this evening is to consider a supplemental ground lease with Midwest Electric Transformer Services. Chris and Brian are going to tag team this one.
No, you're good. And just while Brian's getting up there, I'll say, this was another late amendment to the agreement that was in the packet, only changing the signature block for the county. We didn't have the county commissioners in there properly, so that's been fixed.
So as you recall, back in 2019, Swiger LLC purchased Midwest Transformers, and they had purchased the original, they purchased the building and then they leased the land that would, actually, they assumed the lease that was already on the land by Midwest Transformers. They are continuing to do business as Midwest Transformers. And in 2020, they leased the land to the north. Well, now they would like to lease the 20,000 square feet to the south. So we have created a supplemental ground lease agreement for that land, and all we would like you to do is approve that for them. It will continue, we'll marry it up with the current, the other two leases that are currently on that property, and so everything will expire 2052 or something like that. Yeah, it's like 31 years left, I think, on their original lease, so that's the purpose of this. We were able to get the published ground lease rate for this portion, so that was a good thing for us, and so that's where we're standing today. So that's, and like I said, I would approve, I would request that you approve their supplemental ground lease. I will stand for questions.
Already been approved by the tenant. The county will see it after you guys, should you approve it.
I move that we approve this ground lease agreement.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Good, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next item this evening is an update on dilapidated and unkept properties.
Yes, commissioners, we've got three different properties that we would like to talk about this evening, and these are properties that have went through the environmental control process for various reasons. And we've got some pictures up on the screen. The first property is 611 East 8th, and we, the court has ordered demolition due to this being a dangerous structure. There's a couple, I didn't put all the pictures in here because there's just too many, but due to a fire and years of neglect, the structure needs to be raised. The property is vacant and the property owner is deceased. And so this would be, this has went through the full process, and the court has said you need to demolish it. So what we're asking to do along, and all of these, we have kind of the action for all three of them, is we would like to go ahead and put this out to bid to be demolished. And then what happens when we put these out to bid, then we select the contractor that's going to do the work, and then the cost gets attached to the property as a lien on the property for anybody that's going to purchase the property and then develop it at a later date.
So we would, we would give you the direction to move forward to obtaining the bids, and then later you would come back to us?
Bring it all back to you, yes.
And B. I was going to ask, which one of you, I don't expect a lengthy, but I think for the benefit of the public that's here and the public that is watching, and as a good reminder to the commission, can you just give a brief explanation of how that environmental control process, how it starts, and the length? Because I think oftentimes, and I've been guilty of this myself prior to becoming a commissioner, you just think there's something wrong with a piece of property, something like that, and you think it can be taken care of like that. And so I think it's good to have some idea what that process really involves.
Well, there's obviously numerous due process rights when you're talking about someone's property. I personally didn't handle these. These are handled by our prosecutor in the city court, but something like this where the person is deceased, there's certain notice requirements. Often, I mean, every case is different, but oftentimes, there's maybe an assertion from the landowner, they just need more time to make those repairs. We try and work with them. That can add a lot of time. There can be a challenge. There's, there's numerous issues that draws these cases out. I'm not familiar with this one on, on East 8th, but like you say, when, when the owner has passed, you know, there's efforts obviously to contact, you know, kind of who's next in line in those things. So we do go through those processes, and it does take time.
Months.
Can take years.
Years.
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it just really all depends. You know, sometimes you can have an agreement early on, other times it is drawn out, but yes, we've absolutely had them. And obviously, it's, it's limited resources, and, you know, there's certain, certain properties that warrant a demolition, as you see in the photos here.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The, the next property is 505 East 7th, and this is a court-ordered cleanup for nuisance abatement. The first violation notice was sent to this property in 2017, and there are multiple issues here. We've got structure siding, windows, painting, all needs, repairs, and attention. There's junk and trash in the yard, tires, brush, lumber, et cetera, and around the porch area, there's all kinds of items that need to be removed from the premises. The property, according to the property owner, it is being lived in by the property owner. And so what we would do with this one is we would put it out to bid for all of the items that are listed as those nuisance violations to be abated. And it's going to mean all of this stuff gets cleaned up, it's going to mean that the siding gets taken care of, windows get taken care of, painting, and then all of the trash gets moved out of the yard. I will tell you, this time of year, when you go by, Kelly, and you might go to a couple, I didn't put, I have several other pictures, and I didn't put all of them of the yard in there. This time of year, you don't notice if you would just drive by, but there's a lot of plywood and then rubber tires or metal posts and things laying out in the yard, and in the summer, you can't just go through there and mow it. All of that stuff has to get cleaned up so that the yard will actually get mowed. So there's just a lot of stuff in the yard itself. So that's 505.
And then that attaches to the property?
Yes.
Do they pay it like specials, then?
Yeah, it, it would be...
We don't get our money back until the property's changed.
It's a lien. I, I'm not sure how they spread that, but the city can go forward to and pursue that lien in terms of a foreclosure and enforce it, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not certain how they spread that out. I can get that answer.
Okay. The third property is 400 West 10th. This is a court-ordered cleanup for minimum housing code violations. This has missing or deteriorated siding, soffit material that needs replacing, and from afar, you maybe can't see how bad the structure really does look, but there's exposed wood, peeling paint that needs to be painted. There is a hole in the roof that needs to be repaired on the west side of the house. I wouldn't go in this house based on the things that are wrong with it. The property is vacant, and the property owner is out of state and has been unresponsive to court orders to do the repairs.
Do we know when we first reached out to that? It's been a while.
I don't have that, but it's...
It's been a while.
It's been...
Absolutely.
Quite a while, several years here.
Yeah, numerous efforts to reach out to the owner and try and get a resolution.
And it's also hard to say a specific date because this go-around, it may have been, you know, a year ago, but yet it was also cited for multiple things a couple of years prior, and they did the absolute minimum to get by, and then somebody called it in again, and remember that there are neighbors that are living next to these properties, and they are wanting something done with them, and when this gets extended year after year after year, they get frustrated.
Yeah, I spoke to those neighbors.
This is highly visible.
It is. Well, and you can tell even from that picture that saplings are growing up around the foundation, which is certainly, and then up underneath the siding and things that is causing damage to the structure itself, too.
Fire damage structures, vacant structures that have had and suffered from neglect for a very long time are one thing. The other property I'm a little concerned with, the property owner occupant, you know, more so than from the civil side of the house, but from a health and welfare standpoint. Are there any community resources that we could share with the public or those homeowners? Or, you know, we're, we're looking at having programs to help with repairs in the future. When we send those first letters out, are we saying, hey, you know, talk to us, we have programs available?
Yeah, there's quite a process. There's a lot of discussion that goes on, and in many cases, and in this case, too, I believe the property owner wants to be there. They do not want to be someplace else. And so it's, it's difficult to get the improvements done, and they have a hard time wanting to do the improvements.
We've had a property owner like that in the past.
Right.
That wants to remain on the property.
So we offer multiple options to them.
And that's what people need to hear, is that we aren't heartless, that it's taken a long, slow road to get to this point.
Absolutely. And what we would do, this, again, with this property, we would ask for cleanup and the repairs to be done. In some cases, you know, if there's, say, a broken window, it just depends on the extent. It may just get boarded up, or it may have a window replaced. It's going to depend on several issues. We will get bids on specific items to be done and then look at the value of what it's going to cost, because remember, we're, we're taking all of this on, and in the budget process, a couple of years ago, you had us start putting money aside for demolition, and I believe that we've got some that's saved, but I think it's probably going to get eaten up with this. And I know that probably at your next meeting, you're going to have another property to consider for demolition as well. So we would ask that, we would ask that you would direct staff to move forward with obtaining bids to perform the work ordered by the court for all three properties, and then we will bring it back to you at a later date as we go through the bid process, and then have you award bids.
You just want a positive nod of heads from us, is that what you want?
We would like you to vote to tell us to move forward.
A motion.
On both A and B.
Yeah.
All three of them at one time, or?
Yeah. B is, is the two cleanup properties, A is the demo property, so.
Yeah, so two separate motions, I believe.
I move to approve A.
We have a motion, and, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for court-ordered demo of 611 East 8th, directing staff to move forward to with obtaining bids. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
I move to obtain bids for cleanup of 505 East 7th and 400 West 10th.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Do we have anybody signed up for, Donna, can you check the clipboard? We had nobody sign up for citizens forum. Next item on the agenda this evening is an executive session. We need a motion for that.
And Mayor, I will indicate, we don't anticipate any action following the executive session. I don't know if you want to go around the horn now or not, full discretion to you, but we'll need about 20 minutes from whenever you decide to recess.
Very good. Sir?
Nothing here.
Ma'am?
Thank you for being here.
Very good. Donna?
I was going to tell you, we, we put back about $10,000 a year for demo purposes, and we have about $48,000 in there right now.
Right.
Plus $10,000 this year. Let it go pretty fast with three.
It'll go quick.
Yes.
I would just tell you that we have a wholesale water district meeting next Wednesday, our annual meeting each spring and April.
Very good, thank you.
No, sir.
Thank you, Chris. Nothing?
No, sir.
Denise?
No, sir.
Thank you.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Awesome. Well, I have just the utmost thanks to staff for everything that you do, and it's a lot of hard work, but thank you so much.
Yes.
With that, do we have a motion?
You want this bottom one?
It would be the bottom one, correct.
I move that the city commission recess into executive session to receive legal advice from council. The justification for closing the meeting is to consult with the city attorney to discuss matters privileged under the attorney-client relationship. And the time and place at which the open meeting shall resume is?
7:50.
7:50, okay. 7:50, right here in city commission chambers.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're hereby adjourned to executive session.